Okay, thank you everyone for the slight delay getting started here, but I'm going to call to order the village council regular meeting. It is seven twelve. And we are going to stand for the pledge of allegiance and we are going to have our local girl scout troop forty-four lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody can stand. Okay, so. Whenever you're ready, ready?
(Singing) Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty of us all.
Nicely done ladies.
All right, Madam clerk, would you call the roll things? Lori Borjo, Kelsey Cook.
Here.
Maureen Helmut.
Yes.
Allison Kemp.
Yes.
Jacob Nikasia.
Here.
Here's a man.
And I'll make a motion to excuse Councilperson Borjo.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Helmut, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Okay, item number four, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agendas presented as revised, I believe.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries, we have an agenda. So the next item on our agenda this evening is a presentation. And because we have our special guests in the audience this evening, I wanted to just take a moment so that you all could be introduced to the council members. So we are elected officials who represent all the people who live in the village of Oxford. And so I just wanted to have each council member just talk, take a minute to say what their background is. Because these are things, the work we do at village councils is kind of like our night job, but we all also have other careers and things that we do during the day. So I wanted you to see that there's kind of a diverse group of people here that work for you. And then also, if you want to say something about why you serve on council or kind of what brought you to serve on council. So because I'm springing aside a little bit, I can start us off. So I'm Kelsey Cook. I am the council and I act as the village president. So I chair the meeting, so that's why you hear me kind of talk the most. So during the day, I'm a lawyer. I work for Oakland County, another level of your local government. And my daughter's Natalie, so she's on our Girl Scout troop. And I decided to serve the village of Oxford because I really care about this community. I love Oxford. Moved here for a reason a while ago. And I want to keep the reason I moved here, the same reason why I'm going to stay here. And that's because it's a great family oriented community. It's safe, our local police department does a great job. We have great schools. And I wanted to be part of helping to make decisions to keep the community going in the right direction. So next up, hands it to Allison, she's our president pro temp.
Hi, my name's Allison Kemp. I am a dog groomer during the day. And when I was your age, my favorite subject was social studies. And in college, I took many social studies and policy classes. So I decided to run for council because I thought I could use the what I had learned to help serve Oxford, make it a better place. My favorite thing about being at the council, our council in particular, is that we all, all of our lives are very different. We all did different jobs, we all went to school for different things, which means that a lot of times our ideas are different. And sometimes we disagree. And sometimes someone brings up something that is different than what I would have thought because their life looked different than mine. So everyone here is always extremely respectful. I think that's very important for government to, what makes a government work is when our leaders listen to each other, listen to what the people have to say. And it works best when everyone listens. And even when you disagree, you hear each other out thoughtfully. And at the end of the day, we all do what we do the best.
Thank you. And something next to you?
Hi, I'm Jacob Nikasia. I am the proud father of Hazel Nikasia and Alice Nikasia, both Girl Scouts. This is my first meeting as a council member. The reason why I ran for council is because I love all of you people here in this room and I want to keep our community going in the right direction. And I'm really excited to serve every single one of you, so, thank you.
Want to say what your day job is?
My day job, I'm a mechanical engineer and a commercial real estate consultant. So I primarily focus on green energy and making buildings and corporate real estate as efficient as possible. So it's really complicated job, but at the end of the day, we're making the world a more efficient place.
Thank you.
My name's Maureen Helmut. I'm the senior member of the village council. I'm very old. I worked for the village of Oxford for twenty plus years before I led a council. I've lived in Oxford since nineteen seventy-something. I love this town, I love everybody in this town. I just want to make sure everybody's lived their best life here. And you find people, you know, you can have the easiest topic and someone gets very angry about it. You have to listen to them. And sometimes you change your mind. It's okay to change your mind. I'm just really glad you guys are all here. When you need to learn songs, I used to be the song lady at Girl Scout taking up. I know them all, we'll have a good time.
Thank you, council members. So yeah, welcome and thank you so much for attending our meeting. I'll defer to your Girl Scout troop leader and your parents for how long you want to stay. You know, some of the topics might be interesting to you, others maybe not so much. So feel free at any point to, you know, head back to the community room where I think a lot of your coates are. So I thank you for coming, appreciate you guys. What do you say ladies?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have call to the public. So this is a time where anyone in the audience or in the public wants to address council, they can do so. We ask that you please step up to the podium and you can talk about anything that is on your mind. And we limit it to three minutes per person. So would anyone like to speak on their public comment today?
Kelsey, that's the take one. Those are small ones.
Who wants to speak?
If no one?
Maybe we should have one, one Girl Scout member tell us why she likes being a Girl Scout.
Okay, who wants to do it? Natalie? I hope we have a couple. Okay, let's, we'll go one at a time up to the podium.
Got to go to the podium and state her name.
Whatever. Okay, please away. State your name, how old you are, where you go to school. You can pull that down.
My name is Ella Gibson, I am nine years old. I go to Oxford Elementary School. I like being a Girl Scout because, like, we, we, we go off and sell cookies and that gets money for us to go and do fun things. Like one time, we stayed overnight at the Toledo Zoo in the aquarium. And I also like being a Girl Scout because, like I, like I have a lot of my friends in my troop.
Thank you for your comment, great job. That's Natalie. How many do you want to go? Can change your mind. Alice? Go ahead, good things about it.
My name is Alice and I'm seven years old. I go to Clear Lake Elementary School. Why I like Girl Scouts is because I like making people happy so they can be safe.
Great, thank you for your comment. Are you ready? All right, go ahead. Then you're next. Okay, go ahead. Natalie?
My name is Natalie and I am six years old and I, and I go to Daniel Oxford and I like being a Girl Scout because you get to eat lots of cookies.
Good job, thank you for your comment. You want to go? Go ahead.
My name is Frankie and I'm seven years old and I go to Oxford Elementary. And I like being a Girl Scout because because I like going on field.
I'm Aria and I'm seven years old and I go to Daniel Oxford. And the reason why I like Girl Scouts is I get to see my friends and sell lots of cookies and have fun.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Stefan Squares and I am the Girl Scout leader of these lovely girls. Plus about another six more. We are Girl Scout troop seven, six, nine, four, four. And we have twenty-five girls from across Oxford schools, including OVA, Lakeville Elementary, Clear Lake, OES, and Daniel Oxford. And I'm very proud of these little girls and all of the efforts that they have done. Especially because we have been a troop now for five years and a number of these girls have been with us for all five years. So thank you so much for having us today and exposing them to another aspect of their world around them. And come see if that art index will be there on Friday night selling Girl Scout cookies. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good work ladies, the more fun the older you are.
Wonderful, okay, any further public comment? Okay, seen none. Move on to the consent agenda, item seven.
I'll make a motion to receive and file consent agenda items A and two.
Support. Okay, motion made by Helmut, supported by Kemp. For the reading of the foreclosure letter into the record, do I need to remove that consent agenda? I can just do that?
Just read it.
Okay. Okay, so what's the correspondence that council received was from the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. And it is tax foreclosure season. And so they requested that I read their foreclosure prevention letter into the record so that our residents can be aware of the resources and the time scheduled for foreclosure of properties. The Oakland County Treasurer's Office is in the final stretch of our foreclosure prevention efforts. The tax foreclosure deadline for the 2020 or prior year taxes is on May, sorry, March thirty-first, 2023. That means if these taxes aren't paid off by March thirty-first or any interested party hasn't entered into repayment schedule with the Treasurer's Office by then, the property will be foreclosed. Since December of 2022, the Treasurer's Office has conducted over a thousand taxpayer assistance meetings to assist taxpayers with keeping their properties by working with them to get on a repayment schedule and/or by identifying resources that may be beneficial to them in their situation. We are here to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact us before the tax foreclosure deadline if they have delinquent taxes for 2022 or prior tax years. Taxpayers interested in scheduling a taxpayer assistance meeting, they call us at two four eight eight five eight zero six one one or they may visit www.oakove.com/treasure. Some of the resources available to assist taxpayers include the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, MYHAF, which is a state grant that will cover up to $25,000 for delinquent taxes 2019 and forward, mortgage payments and utility bills. Must be a primary residence, make less than 150% of AMI, which is average median income, improve COVID hardship in order to qualify. Apply at myhaf.michigan.gov. Second, Financial Empowerment Center in the Treasurer's Office, which provides one-on-one financial coaching and services to help taxpayers achieve their financial goals. Contact Rita at napsir@oakove.com or two four eight eight zero seven five two eight seven. And Lake Shore Legal Aid provides free legal services to people who are low income and seniors. One eight eight seven eight three eight one nine zero is the number for new clients. Again, we are here to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact the Treasurer's Office if they have delinquent taxes for 2020 or prior tax years. If taxpayers are interested in scheduling a taxpayer assistance meeting, they may call us at two four eight eight five eight zero six one one or they may visit oakove.com/treasure. And that is signed by Robert Witzberg, our Oakland County Treasurer. Also in our packet is a letter from a resident, Robin Demiglio. And so I just wanted to bring that to council members' attention. It's concerning the warning citations for the failure to remove ice off the sidewalks during the back-to-back ice storms that they've had. We can see in your code enforcement reports that there were dozens and dozens of these letters sent out. And so this writes to them as a senior in our community and is asking for, I'll just say, a more dignified approach to the letters that we send out. And also acknowledging that we do have seniors or people in our community who are not able to shovel ice in particular off sidewalks at all, let alone on a timely basis. So if that's just something for council to consider, consider, maybe we take up at a later time. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the table to receive and file, made by Helmut, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Next is seven B approval items.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items B, one, two, and three, including the bills named out of $342,507.14.
Okay, motion made by Helmut, is there a second? Support. Okay, seconded by Kemp. Roll call vote please. Helmut?
Yes.
Borjo Sampson. Kemp?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Cook? Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Let me move on to unfinished or old items on the agenda. We have item A, our PUD project update. This is the building at thirty-two East Burdick. Did I see Mr. Wackel or Mr. Mordor?
No, I can report on that briefly. Mr. Wackel was in Zatnun from the building part of Kim and stuff. And then he did talk to me afterwards. Not a lot has changed since last month, so I said, Ben, he didn't really need to come tonight. A few items, some of the building concrete that was intact that were the big amount has now been moved. There still is a portion of the garage foundation still in place that they couldn't get to and now the frost on stuff, I don't know, so they're kind of not finishing that yet, but we hope soon. The contractor that's been lined up under contract to begin their parking lot process is expected to be at the end of the month, or maybe April. Some of these outfits, the patio around on the top floor, we'll see is done. Some of it's deemed not open on purpose because it would be better to put the steel up on the walls and then finish the summit underneath, so. Really was a whole lot of it after the report, so I believe you might have to show up.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Did he mention the status of his architect? But I believe he was in the hospital last.
He passed.
Oh.
Yes.
That's going to make things really easy.
Yeah, so he was in, must have been right after our meeting last month. He was in talking to our building official with his electrician. And that's when we thought, you know, we were hopeful that the gentleman would make it, come through and come out of the hospital and he's now. So there are some things on the building wall of the first floor, they use the same contractor, same architect. And there's some things that need to be changed on there eventually for the as-built drawings, once they're completed. For instance, they're changing from electric water heat to gas water heat for passive water, vice versa. But so that will need to be changed on there. But our building officials, given them the agreement, I mean, go forward, tell them what we're doing, go forward with those plans. And then just to make sure it's documented properly on the as-built drawings. When, when he was in talking to me today and showing me some of the pictures on the sofa and stuff on the top floor, the gentleman texted me right then, it was his potential new architect. And so he was going to call him right after he left here to follow up, hopefully get him now. Ironically, I was talking to Kelly, was it Kelly Westbrook today? Somebody that, or no, it was our building official this morning. Last time was where there's Two Souths and the Park of Victoria's and several, several of those buildings who's doing some work and renovations down there. Apparently his architect passed away too, so I'm thinking maybe it's the same gentleman. So both of them are in the process of finding new persons to work for them.
And I apologize if you already said this. I have a note from the last, yeah, from February's meeting that the parking lot would be addressed in the last week of March, which is like next week. And then maybe two weeks after that for paving. Do we know anything about that?
He said, yeah, basically, and I just thought, it's under contract? Whether it's been, he said he could be here by the middle of month, if not, you know, by the end of month to begin the work. Kennedy surveying, has to come out and put the stakes in. He just doesn't want to do it two or three weeks in advance because then kids come out and pull them out and then they have to have it done again. So he's looking for more of a shorter window to get the staking done, Kennedy. But he still said today that middle, end of month, they should be out there, whether it's been. The frost isn't real deep, so the frost lot shouldn't be a much of an issue this year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, we will move on to eight B, the crosswalk considerations.
And this is one of those older areas we talked about. We're going to look perhaps to budget and the upcoming budget. I went through the Hudson Denison project cost sheets and stuff in there and come out with, broke out some numbers. Dan and I and Keith and I, we looked at where the locations would be, what kind of removal and replacement of sidewalks would have to be there. The part down there at one thirty pi, we'll have to remove probably twenty to twenty-five feet of sidewalk, lower it down and then report because it's so close to the curb, it won't be ADA compliant if it's left from there down the curb. So that's why there's a little more removal and replacement down that section. But these are some pretty good numbers based on the project we did out here at Hudson Denison, that contractor. Unit pricing came out of that contract. I'm guessing a little bit on the contractor mobilization and the maintaining of traffic because as a saw cut, those curbs out there, they'll have to have some traffic set up and signage and stuff. And that's their, give them a rate safety or action traffic management, they'll contract with that. So none of this has been, we talked about it obviously with Roke. We haven't done any engineering, we spec'd it out exactly. We have, I think the contractor should be able to keep saw cutting forth accordingly and just have it inspected so we can maybe avoid some engineering costs, that's what I'm hoping for. But so that meets that.
Have you dropped at the homeowner one thirty-five?
No, I'm going to write them a letter. And we've been there, nobody's come out, we've been there a couple of times, but I'm going to write them a letter, break it down, where it's at, show them what the plans are.
Is the sidewalk in village property?
I believe so, Don, it jogs a little bit there because of the right of way. There's a little bit of jog around the church parking lot. And I think that was part of the reason because at one time, was it out in the private area then?
Correct.
And so you'll see a little jog there, so it's the right of way area. And I believe that's the section we made at the date of the lower. So going forward, I think, you know, we have enough of this preliminary costs to, when we meet and go over our budget, consider whether we want to add this in. And if so, yep, and then we can just take this off under any business and we'll take it up under budget consideration and as this brings forward.
I know the West Burdick would be going into my neighbor's property. Would you write, would you be preaching it to her as well?
Yeah. And that quite as much work to be done there, not as disruptive.
Right.
But still, the notification will be this.
What's a detectable warning surface?
You know, it came down, the ramps of the orange color, mason brick color, hobbie things. That's what I call them, hobbie things. But they're, that's the actual detectable warning surface for ADA over the, those who can't see well. It has to be a contrasting color as well in those. And this is quantity, some of those are square foot quantity, like a detectable warning surface is a square foot.
So you said this will just be something that we talk about in the project?
Yeah. At least now we have a rough idea, you know? And then those numbers, like, you know, those quantities, unit quantities came in our other projects, so.
Any other questions or comments from council at this time?
Are they going to have to shut down the, shut down Burdick, I guess?
They're, they're, it's got a center terminal there. There might be temporarily, while they have the equipment, saw cutting and removal. And then we saw horses up perhaps overnight until they pour it, which will have to have the platters on it, whatever. But I think it's wide enough there that it won't be closure while they're not working regularly. While they're working there, there's potential, I guess, for a flagman for a few hours where they actually saw cut and get their equipment to pull the curb out. So that's, that's a bit of a wild card, I mean, maintaining traffic that they have in there for the equipment that they rent from those companies that bring it out for the platters and the signage.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to next agenda item, eight C. It's a special event application for the Oxford Turkey Tract.
Yes. Oh, I saw you there, I thought, man, I know I know that guy. Aaron, Aaron is here. This is what we, we presented to you guys last month as a heads up. And in the meantime, Aaron and Don and Chief Saul and Matt Majetic was here. We all sat down and went over, it's a pretty good plan. It's like the best time ever, closed down some streets and parking lots. So it's, it's all of us are in agreement that it's, we have a plan that's solid. He's, he's up for covering all the costs for the personnel, police, DPW and things like that. He's here to answer any other questions you might have.
Yeah, welcome, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you for letting me address you guys, appreciate it. So my name's Aaron Callion, I live in Lake Orion, grew up in the area. I've put on a lot of events around the country and I lived in Texas for quite a long time. We moved back recently. And one thing I always wanted to do that I haven't been able to yet is put on a holiday series of 5K, 10Ks. And kind of, a lot of the events I used to do were rather large. And I kind of want to focus on hometown events that are a little smaller now. We're talking anywhere from two fifty to seven fifty, somewhere in there. I'm thinking that this being the last event of the year, if it's approved, would be probably around five hundred people, maybe a little bit more. And so Thanksgiving morning is when it would be slated for. And that, it would, parking would start around six and then the race itself would start at eight. And the 5K, 10K would go off at the same time. And that whole thing would take about ninety minutes to complete. And after that, right after that, there's a family mile. We used to do a kids mile, but we found that a lot of the time the adults wanted to join their kids. And so they wanted to sign up, but, you know, it was geared towards kids. So having a family mile, we can include runners that have family there, they could sign up for that. I let those, those runners that have already run, they can run free and join their kids or others can sign up and they can walk it with their kids. Mainly the holiday thing, besides just kind of being more fun in general and having themes to go along with holidays. Like I have one called the Rad Rabbit that's out in Stormy Creek, that's in a couple of weeks here, just before Easter. And then we have another one, that Canterbury Village called the Frankenfrenzy, that is a week before Halloween. So this series is aimed also to get the community behind it. And we've found, I think, I hope, that we will see more non-runners come out. Because I think that establishes a tradition and gets family behind it, people dress up. It tends to be a little more fun and a little less serious than a normal 5K, 10K where people are just out to, to race and get it done. So hopefully we have all kinds of runners and walkers and people that come out and join us.
Wonderful, thank you. Where would people be parking? I'm sorry if that's in here and I was overlooked it.
So forgive if I don't know the names of parking lots and things like that. But it would, it's, the map you see has them starting at Centennial Park, that area right there, the parking lot right off to the side. So only a small section of that would be combed off for the start-finish line area, which is a common area. That whole area is available for parking. And then anywhere else that we're permitted to have people park, because it is Thanksgiving morning, most, if not everything, should be shut down. So if we're allowed to have them park in any other main parking lots, public parking lots, where they're allowed to legally park any other day of the week, we would tell them to do that. Just not blocking driveways and not illegally parking, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
I don't run with good luck.
Come out and walk.
Cheer them up and freshen them.
How's that?
One of the, one of the aspects that, you know, we kind of talked around is they're going to go down Denison all the way to West Street. And Aaron was one of our. And Aaron was going, one of our suggestions and requirements is to mail letters in advance, week or so, to let all the people know that. After, some people still work, right? Thanksgiving morning, they go into work. That during this little window, there's going to be a lot of people on the road, just be very careful. Police and DPW will be at the intersections down with barricades and stuff while the runners take off. Barricades might be pulled back for an hour or more, letting traffic on Pineak go. And then as runners start to come back in, the barricades go back up for another window where people come back by. But during that timeframe, the road won't be closed, so those residents, of course, it can't be. But, so there's going to be some notification to all those residents that, hey, that morning during this window, there's going to be one hundred, two hundred, three hundred people running by your house and then coming back a little later.
And, and the mass of people, because it's a mass start, obviously, it's not in that big group that people go through. Obviously, as they're going through, cars won't be able to go through that because it's a lot of people all at once. So they'll go down Denison, up west and then hook on a polyand trail. And so that whole thing would be very quick.
That's the beginning of the race.
Yeah, it'd be under ten minutes that people might be inconvenienced if, if for instance, they don't read the letter or plan ahead or anything like that. But then after that, half the race is going to be in the five K. Traditionally, every race I've ever put on, it's almost half in the five K, half in the ten K. And so it's an out and back course on polyand trail. Half of the five K would turn around before Drainer. And then the other half would cross, go down and turn around before, it's Indian Wood, right? Yeah, sorry. They would turn around just before that. So the only road they would actually be crossing is Drainer. And I've already reached out to the police that would be covering that. Haven't heard back, but the officer in charge of that, he coordinates a lot of events like this. So the point is when they come back in, if cars are crossing intersections and stuff, it shouldn't be that hard to avoid the cars and keep the runners going because they're spread out quite a bit at that point. We will provide a little medical to, my cousin works, he's a medic with Rochester Fire Department. And so I, I don't need to tap into your resources unless you want me to do that, but keeping you guys free of that, I'll have him come out with another medic that he works with. And we usually have, I'll probably lead the race on my bike, then a medic will be in the back. So that we're kind of going back and forth within the group and another medic will be at the finish, being able to respond in a car. And then obviously, anything that's extreme would be nine one one call immediately.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council anymore? I'm going to move to approve the special event application, twenty twenty-three zero one. With the conditions noted in the memorandum signed by our village manager, Mr. McDor, so that's all village personnel costs for the day. Events are paid by the applicant. Deposit and full amount of the expected cost to be paid in full prior to the event. The letters are mailed to the residents, we'll do that. That will be done informing them of the race, the timeframes, where others in the area. Advocate must remove all materials related to the event, leave Centennial Park clean upon departure, no later than noon on race day. And all portage on units must be removed by noon Friday twenty-fourth. Deposit of two hundred and fifty to be provided and forfeited if any portages remain on village property past two P M on that day.
I'll support that.
And just for clarification, I had to share all the details with Aaron, but we talked about that. His hope is to get everybody out there. It's shop small Saturday, it's a busy weekend, little space, some of these portages will be in spaces over there along the back walls, we might have to help.
Right. Last question. Will someone lock the course to make sure everything's cleaned up and done?
Yeah, when, so I'll, we're really not truce with how, it's set up kind of like a trail run, actually. I have a little flagging that I'll clip to trees or whatever and then some signs that are some little like, they're AD, they look like A D T signs that people have in their front yard, but they have arrows to guide people. So that's really about it, maybe a little survey flags here and there. So the person in the very back, that, that medic, my cousin, he will pick it all up or I will, or someone that's in the back as the last runner is guided in. We just pick up as we come in so that when the last person's in, within ten, fifteen minutes, we know it's all picked up and we're done.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote please.
Nikosia?
Approved?
Yes.
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
And Borjo is exit.
Motion carries, that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is.
Don't forget the girl.
Do you recommend a for the twenty twenty-three water service line replacement that to twenty twenty to rate by DPW and Sons?
Again, we, we, I put a little background in there for you guys to see how we've come to this arrangement in using DPW and Sons and Dan can speak to them as well. How very lucky we are. The pricing is great, the service is great, the, the way they work with their residents is great. So we'd like to just continue on with their work we approved for them last summer and go forward with the fifty ones this summer. Because as we discussed, I don't want to have workshops around Christmas time. We weren't going to do any water beans this year. We're going to focus more on seriously.
Yeah, that's a great price. I don't know how we ever got this price, to be honest, so.
You know, area you're focused down. What section are you next? Is there a specific street?
I've given manager McDor a list of proposed locations that will give the contractor and then he'll be in contact with the residents themselves. He does all the scheduling and all that. We're looking at East and West Burdick, some more on Pineak Street, just all over town. A few on Pearl. I think a few on Glassby. So yeah, they're, they're spread out throughout the town.
I'll make a motion to allow the village manager to award the twenty twenty-three water service line replacement to DPW and Sons utilizing the purchase order as a continuation to the twenty twenty-two bid process at a cost of thirty-seven hundred dollars per location.
Second, motion made by Helmut and by Cook. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Ken?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
And Cook?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next, A E, the RHO P S C engineering contract amendment request for the Hudson Denison project.
So there's kind of two items here. One is a request to continue. So when we first laid out the project, of course, I'm being very cautious on how much curb we remove, what we do, what we don't do. Because again, we have many projects that we're going to do over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. So we're very cautious on expenses. So as the project goes on, certain things come up, like the septic tank we found in one of the parking ladders, put the land across two or three south. So collapsing storm structure in the south of the five one south building and Denison over there. Some of those things can kind of pop up. Some of the things we come back to is that, you know, the new sidewalk along the brick wall here on Hudson and it looks terrible. We have now the new sidewalk, they're lower, you see the foundation of the brick walls, we're going to have to climb back and do some of these things. So some of those things have added to the project, but they're just necessary. There's a new drainage structure that Goddard put in over there at the church on hubby, one hubby there, I remember the kind of first construction, I think. Some of those things we just have to add to get it right, get the survey or the drainage right and things like that. The other part of this, you'll see there's two, there's, there's like four or five pages of the agreement extension. The traditional services and then there's the settlement agreement. And this had to, this brought four or five pages back. It had A E written on top again. There was the driveway, there was a couple items that between the contractor and your both did come out and didn't do as well as planned. And it's not our fault. It's one or both of them. And so they are working with and they, RHO had paid portion of the work. If you recall, the driveway going in, the south driveway going right by our dumpsters here on Hudson, it was poured, but then it tore off and poured again. Because the proper elevation, proper slope wasn't in place. And again, that's not our fault. Between the two of them, that should have been worked out. So it was already a settlement between RHO and them to share that cost for all that going back in. We didn't absorb any of that cost. There's a breakdown in here, talks about that cost. I think it's fourteen thousand dollars that RHO has credited back to the village for work that didn't go as planned or they had to redo because of the difference. Yeah, okay. So there's two pages in the settlement, page one and page two. Bottom of page one says, came up by RHO, it's fourteen thousand four oh eight, they'll be writing a check back to us for it, to cover those costs.
Is that just an offer to us or how does he?
Well, based on the unit quantities and stuff and the actual costs of contractors to come out and do inspections, for the follow-up inspections that RHO was back on site for that we wouldn't have to pay for or shouldn't have to pay for. And rather than taking a pot of the bill for the project, they figure those out and they write us a check back to us.
So it took me a question, the, there's no fixed dollar amount recovery here that, you know, we could say, this is exactly what you owe us. I've asked Joe and Joe's with that very closely when we were putting this agreement together, does this fairly compensate the village for the mistakes, if you will, hard word, but you know, that cost of the village money? And Joe looked at all the data, he goes, this number seems to be in order to compensate the village. But putting it down, you know, it shouldn't have been twenty cents more or five dollars less. Yeah, it could be, but so it was not a direct figure.
And on page two of the kind of extension requests for the additional work, that's traditional oversight engineering and actually traditional items that come around. On page two, that you'll see the breakdown of the four summary of finances, the second column of the rate shows RHO where those amounts talks about money is paid to Waldorf and initial money they paid to Waldorf in that fourteen four oh seven. So it's pretty close to what they paid out, so. Now again, there are, the request are also for ten thousand additional for RHO for the continuation of the extra work, things that would impact onto the project. Again, some of those things, thirty-six day infiltration basin down there by the church, things like that. That, when you lay it all out, that was a very difficult corner for them, for them and the contractors. I think the survey crews were out and they had that corner formed up with the concrete forms for the curving. I saw it four or five different times, set up, taken down, set up, taken down. And I think Waldorf told us a little more like nine times that the concrete forms were in place and then RHO had their engineering to go later. So those are the things that I'm pushing back down and saying, you know, one and done, you know, you shouldn't be here that long.
Why did that?
They lay out and, and again, they engineer it, they come out, they survey it, they stake it, and it should be done. Didn't work out that way. That corner was crazy, it was a nightmare. And then one time they had, you know, they were redoing it, going through all the stuff. And then they had it all laid out once and then the southeast corner where there was a hybrid, the hybrid wasn't in first. So then they had to take the hybrid back in first. So I think they were pretty affronted all the, all both parties on that corner. And then as it comes around and heads west on Denison, that's part of there, that's when we, there was water each other to begin with. The church runs off of water, it kind of just torques into that area right now. Our plan all along was to help it out a little bit with a low curve or a multiple curve along there. And like, they're paving the road and the curb's not in. It's like sixty foot curve, it's not there among the church. So that will be going in the spring. It should have been done first before the paving. So there's some things, I think that one corner up there got them off their game, both contractor and the engineer both. But our, our plan is, that's not our fault, right? So that's what we're pushing back and getting this money back because if they're spinning the wheels out there, it's not ours.
Just out of curiosity, appendix A, what's mobilization?
When the contractor was off site and it's off site for winter, then it come back again. So they spent a whole day just bringing down, dropping off the equipment, go back, another truck coming down till they had, you know. Not really a productive day, just bringing equipment and dropping it off, that's going to be here for a week or so.
Do you want?
Two motions.
Two motions.
Yeah. One will be to, to sign the final, pull the final settlement release. And Bob, we said, Bob, two times, I heard it, clarify the things. Take more a little bit.
Back it off.
Sorry. Look, yeah, on the final settlement agreement, you'll see, I'm halfway down page one, A and B, those are the items that were, you know, being compensated, recompensated back to us for.
I'll move, so I'll start with, I guess, the order in our cabinet to move to a contract amendment as presented. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Ken. Any discussion on that item?
That's future with the.
Oh, sure.
That was in there.
Do we know approximately how much the, the curving cost right there on that section?
That, well, that's already part of the project. That, that will be paid as, as always meant to be paid through the contract work on unit pricing per foot. It just wasn't put in. Then they're out of laptop and, you know, I'm like, where is it? And they're like, yeah, we just realized it, that part. Because it was, it's not the high bank curve, it's the high back curve. And then it was down to the flat curve, the six foot. So it's a different whole setup of project, but not project, but product. And yeah, so that was after the fact, they realized it. That'll be done this spring. They just recently, how long ago it was down, a month ago, they put the catch basin in at under bottom monster over here, head there and the north side of the church. There's a couple punches that they're still working on. It's like one is, a couple of things that came up after the fact that are exits. As you come out on Denison, leaving the exit street, right, the trucks are still coming out wide into the properties across. Even with brand curve over there, going over the curve into the part between the sidewalk and curb. Don, I think we just signed into that area to dislaid some of that. The opening was built, I think it might even have been the same or wider, it was the driveway approach out to Denison. They're still cutting the corners, so now we're coming back and adding like four more feet on both sides of that driveway apron out there in that area. We also did it when they reformed one on Denison and Hudson, that was widened out, I think, a little bit too. So it means respect, but the trucks actually cut the corners anyways and so we're coming back and adding a four footer both side. So that's one of those extra things that comes up because if you don't do it, they're just going to do the terraces and tearing it up and breaking up the concrete. And then coming around from hubby east towards twenty-four there on Denison. We're going to have them hydro back down and put about twenty-four inches or so shoulder, shoulder along there. We don't want a new laptop fighting roof to side and soft top well. So that's going to be backed out or dug out and then stone put in along the edges this spring as well. Again, we could have spent a lot more money, said tarow all curb, put all the curb in, where there's not curb, put new curb in. But of course, I didn't want to do that. We're trying to save cost on the front end. But still, some of these things we have to come back and say, well, we can't leave it just like that. We're going to do something, a lot less cost, but it's a little more than, you know, the original amount.
I'm going to amend my motion to include the cost in the contract amendment request so that it, for an additional ten thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'll do that by second.
So that motion on table, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Nice one, Nikosia, correct?
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
All right, roll call vote please.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Borjo is absent.
And motion carries. And then I will move to authorize the village manager to execute the fully final settlement and release agreement between the village of Oxford and RHO Professional Services Company as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, supported by Helmut. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Helma?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
And Cook?
Yes.
Borjo is absent.
Great. Motion carries, thank you. Can we move on to number nine, new business, A? Yes.
There were eight that I added.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, you probably had the original.
I had another new business on mine when I was looking around for, okay, food truck ordinance to follow that.
It's basically, as I talked last night, the food and food establishment ordinance is where I thought the food truck ordinance would fit in nicely, makes sense. It's already there. When I tried to incorporate it, the more I read on that ordinance, the more weird it got. And so my thoughts were that maybe we should throw this out and start from scratch. And it'll probably be a lot of those pages, I'm guessing, because a lot of those is just old outdated. We don't have health officer on, on staff. They don't issue, we don't buy some permits, things like that. So there's a lot in there that I think that we need to move.
This is one of those projects where you're, where you're working, you see it all the time and we get a. This is one of those projects where you're good, where you're working, you see it all at once, and we get it out. Maybe for the way they would say, you know, I think I should start from scratch. Because changing this is gonna be harder than doing it.
Right. I agree.
What's the closest thing we have to a health officer now, or who would be signing off on this?
Chief majestic.
Building official, building official, building permits, we issue our, our building permits. And that's building official, which, again, that's building code. Now, he would go out and investigate, you know, the hoods and things like construction of the business stuff. Fire department takes it through the hoods, meet the fire code, put us fire than being constructed or cover being the proper height and things like that, that's the building official. But that's nothing to do with licensing. We don't license, that's health departments. So, I, I, and there's, you know, there's, there's language in here that talks about if someone's suspected of having clinical disease, the health officer can shut down the restaurant and take people, go get tested and get x-rays, and that's all this is.
Too much stuff to work around.
Too hard to work, it's not.
So, are you looking for a direction to move forward?
With a new, with a new, a new, uh, uh.
Okay, so what, are you looking for a motion on that, or just to run?
To, to, to truck aspects into it as well.
Right.
Okay, and it would be an ordinance in, so general code, or it's a, nothing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Something, it's something that?
It's in a court ordinance, it's right now.
Mr. Davis would do.
Yeah, not as long as it's a, Joan, I'll just get it ready as a, as a code.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, Mr. Mendor, Mr. Davis worked toward drafting a new food truck ordinance. Is that what you would?
We can put a fashion, so.
We're the full establishment ordinance, including food trucks.
Food and food establishment ordinance, including food trucks.
Support.
Motion made by Cooks, forwarded by Helmut, any discussion?
Sounds like we need a, a new, new one regardless of, of the food truck ordinance.
Very, very, very true.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries, thank you.
Bob?
Yes.
When they wrote code, the codified, the ordinance says, shouldn't they have gotten some of this? Didn't they go through all of that, they're supposed to be updating that and getting rid of all the garbage shit?
Because I'm pretty sure we're not having people have a negative chest, chest x-ray every time.
You know, the, yes and no, that, you know, how, how deeply the content review was versus getting past the title and the hereby ordained, you know?
We made a lot of money.
I know, I know, I hear you.
I feel like that should have been, like, this, the more I read, the worse this, like, more red flags they should have raised.
Yeah, if you, if you can't sleep tonight, read the whole thing.
Okay, so now we move on to new business, A, first reading, the amendment to the article. Thank you. Parks and recreation.
So, and this was, even though I was focusing on the expansion of the, um, social district in the, in the Centennial Park, and that was a discussion last month, and I focused on the alcohol portion of our ordinance, even though the, I knew parks was the issue. And Terry's opinion as well, actually, there's, parks has this issue also, with the, the, the prohibitive, prohibition power in the end. So, we did the first reading on the alcohol one, made it work. Now, we need to do a first reading on the amendment to, uh, the parks portion of it.
And then we can do the second reading.
And we put it together for a controls first thing we need next month, so. Again, the same thing, we were looking just to add the same text on the bottom, except we do authorize social digital comments area. That's the only amendment, need to do that, so that's what your first reading would be.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the amendment to article ten, Parks and Recreation, section forty-six dash five.
Second, motion made by Helmut, second by Cook, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Helmut?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
No, did I say that right? Nicosia, I am so sorry. Could you just say it just? People do that to me all the time, it doesn't look anonymous, so I mean, I'm really, really sorry about that. Uh, where was I, Camp?
Camp.
Cook?
Yes.
And Borjo's absent.
Motion carries, thank you. Next is item B, that's an alley journey Lutheran church property deed correction.
So, you guys saw what happened, packaged a little bit of background, a little bit of craziness.
Yeah.
Bob dug up some stuff today, he sent over to me on his riot here, so we did, Pastor Matt coming, we have a little impromptu conversation today. We all agreed to mess up and needs to be fixed, that's kind of where we're at.
Same certain, yeah, welcome, Mr. Matt.
Howie, yeah, Pastor Matt from Journey Lutheran Church in Oxford, Michigan. Journey Lutheran exists because Holy Cross Lutheran Church and Living Word Lutheran Church both dissolved and reformed as one new ministry with a focus on sharing Jesus' love in North Oakland County. And part of that process was transferring over all of the assets and property, including the deed of the property at one three six South Washington Street here in the village of Oxford. We ran into problems almost immediately when we saw that there was not one deed, but many deeds. And essentially, what, we talked with our lawyer and with the surveying company is we wanted to reform those deeds into one unit. But then, we had property, according to the documents that we had, that we didn't think was ours. And we were taking care of property that was technically the village's. So, the idea that we came up with was to basically just swap it, because that's kind of what the status quo has been. The village has been maintaining Edison Alley, we've been maintaining the, the grass and parking lot. We understand that it's more land going to the village than we're receiving in return. That isn't an issue. We paid for the surveyor to come out, we've paid for the lawyer to, to drop the work. If the village wanted to split the cost on that, that'd be great. But, again, we just kind of wanna get this done. And the way that things have been going, you've been taking care of it, we've been taking care of it, seems pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
One thing that, you know, and I had to update tonight, it's, you have been on Edison Alley, right, it's a half moon, right? It's the colossus without the other half. And it's, it would be nice if we had a little bit after that, but they already have plans for that space, and they're already giving a grant for doing the stuff there. So, that sounds like that's not gonna be a viable option.
Yeah, those, those plans are in conjunction with the DEA of Oxford. We wanna put in a ten by twenty foot pavilion that would be for public use in the southeast quadrant of the DEA. It's in conjunction with an Eagle Scout, who's a member of our church, who would be doing it as his, basically, final project to get his Eagle Scout. And that's been, that's been waiting. He's been waiting to get his Eagle Scout for basically eighteen months now, as we try to figure out who owns what, and, yeah.
I suppose we could, if he was meaning to get forward, I mean, you show ownership of that particular piece, correct?
Yeah.
So, we could, we could, we could do the permit, get the permit issued.
Okay.
We, you know, because this could take.
Because there's a cement, there's basically a cement pavilion base, and then the pavilion above, that we would maintain.
So, the, the presented solution may in fact be the solution. But Mo recalled that we dealt with this issue, and I kept thinking about it and I did a pretty good search and found documents from two thousand twelve where we dealt with this issue. I mean, I literally got them at five forty-five this afternoon. And there was a lot of time spent back in two thousand twelve at the, at the county register of deeds, getting all the exhibits. And I turned all that research and documentation over to the village, I'm just, I just haven't, I need a, I need time to review what happened in two thousand twelve, and I apologize that we just found these. But, we could probably get your Eagle Scout going, but in terms of getting a final resolution on this this evening, I think the village needs to look at what we did in two thousand twelve.
And that was before my time being in Oxford, so I have. I'm on.
We're, we're happy to share whatever that research shows with, thank you, attorney. Who's the attorney?
I'm blanking. I'll, I'll get his email and get that.
You don't know your attorney's name?
I'm blanking, yeah, right. It's not you, if it was you, Bob, I would know.
I will pray for you.
Is it Bob, what's he?
The only reason I remember this particular, is, is I remember being intrigued one night when you made the presentation about Thursday night beer and Bible night.
It's true.
I think it's totally happened.
Yeah, yeah, so we, I used to pray before the council meetings, because I was invited to do so.
Yeah, you wanted to do a prayer.
Was blessed to do that, and one of the nights, they asked me, and, yeah, we do beers and bibles. This Thursday's men's night at Homegrown for all of our, all the guys, anybody's welcome.
Awesome.
Encouraging one another, because our world needs encouragement.
How much money is your church put towards, how much, how much money is your church put towards lawyer fees and its survey?
We're, uh, we're, uh, we're over our budgeted amount for our lawyer fees from the last two years. We had hoped to do it for less than two thousand dollars. We're probably over five thousand now, but because the work's not finished yet, the last piece of that is actually having the lawyer get the description of the parcels from the surveying team.
And record the new document.
And record it as a new document and new deed for the village. So, probably close to.
We're on the whole stretch.
Probably close to ten, but I don't have a, an actual figure because it's in plus. I just know we're over our budget.
That doesn't require sort of court action to like, push things back to get everything.
Okay.
Okay.
Property splits and combinations come to me, and if it's a weird lot, I'll run by Mario for if it's a zoning issue.
It's an administrative issue.
Yeah, and, and I, I process splits.
So, you would have to, two years.
Part, I think, part of the problem, what happens sometimes, that happened to Chuck's manager's property of forty-seven North. People do a deed, they take registered deeds, and they think, I'm good here, but the client's position, he does the mapping and his ID number stuff are unaware. So, there's just two planets down there that aren't really connecting, and perhaps that's what happened here. Perhaps the deeds were recorded.
We just don't.
Position, because I remember a couple years ago, I looked and I'm like, hmm, I don't know how we own right through their parking lot and where their, where their playground is, right? So, doesn't make sense. And then he was kind of, we were, we were in a class to their chamber coffee thing or something, and then he worked on this, like, oh, good, because it sounds weird.
Yeah, that's very, well, it sounds like we need a little bit more time, but.
Totally understand. Journey, Journey wants to be a good neighbor. We allow our buses in Oxford community to use the parking lot as a turnaround. The fact that Journey exists is kind of proof that we're better together. We've been able to do things as this new ministry that we would not have been able to before. I think I'm most proud of Caring for Oxford, which is an initiative that we started for mental health care. And we've raised funds and given away a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the aftermath of the shooting at our high school on November thirtieth. And that wouldn't have been possible if Journey didn't exist. Holy Cross would not have been able to do that on its own. And so, this is just another part of us wanting to be good neighbors, which is why we're not interested in compensation for the land or anything like that. We just want what, whatever things. What, what we thought was true, we want that to be true. So.
You got it.
Well, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you all. See you next month.
Thanks, man. Right, um, next up is budget workshop dates. Oh, yeah, thank you. So now we need to, how many workshops do we need to schedule for the week? How many would you like to come up here?
The first one, we would meet, let's say we meet in a couple of weeks. I have a draft for this, we, you know, but achieved and, and I've already met and discussed those aspects of it. Order review will be done here soon to counties, we should get some final numbers on the tax values and things like that. So, I, I can really flesh it out a lot, there's gonna be some things that we wanna discuss about the parking lot, the parking lot proposal for engineering, perhaps the next budget. The other items in here, that we talked about, like the sidewalk or that crosswalk. So, again, a couple of budget workshops over the next couple of months, should be enough, I guess, so. Today's fourteenth. If you guys are going, try to schedule on between now and like, I couldn't do anything next week, anyway, I don't have it tightened up that much. First, I could do anything, probably the, even the next week might be tough to get some real close numbers, maybe the first week in April. That's the week before our budget. Or we, we could have a general discussion more about it in two weeks, even though we might have to dial it into revenues and stuff. So, the last week of the month might work.
We also wanted to meet, to continue some of the other workshop topics, the rental ordinance and stuff, so would that be?
We could do a lot at the same time, and it depends on how much time you guys have to do it. I mean, otherwise, you're gonna have multiple workshops, right?
Yeah.
Or you get multiple tasks at a workshop, and just spend a little more time there that evening.
Yeah, how long would it typically take for a budget workshop? Usually use the full, like, say, let's try to make the workshop two hours long, like, how much would we get through in two hours?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can put the budget, I think we can put the budget in an hour at least, get into the background, or we're laying out the phones, where we're at, what some key ideas from you guys, other priorities and things, and kind of an idea, how, how we have one price for the painting and repairs, the rough repairs on the building. I, it's going in the paper next week, you get a couple more prices for that. So, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a little more valid numbers, and those are the things we'll just put on the table, you guys can talk. I would say hours, we might at least go through the budget, to at least, not have it done, of course, but to go through it, get familiar with it, getting over where I take, it was the first time seeing it, I'm sure you'll grasp it though, really easy. And then we get another hour to tackle the other items, perhaps.
Yeah, what do you, council members think about that, if we do like, a couple, if we schedule two meetings, then the first hour is for the budget, and the second hour is for just other issues? We have the rental issue, social media, fire hall, parking lot issues, so we can kind of.
Is that too much to tackle? I mean, I feel like the budget, especially my first time, I'm not speaking, my first time, it was like scramble my brain. It's a lot to prepare for in one meeting, I, I don't.
Yeah, it is, I mean, that, Joe's a good job of kind of going through and presenting it, so we could get like, an initial meeting where we spend an hour reviewing it, and then follow up, like, at the next workshop, like, our, you know, kind of questions and finalizing it. Or just being able to use that same meeting time to address some of the other issues we've been kind of, been lingering, so. And you could put your availability for additional meetings each month, because I know this is new to, new to your calendar.
Mondays and Fridays usually work best, earlier, if, if I have to travel or whatever, but I'll, I'll try to make whatever, whatever work, if you throw it out there, I'll try to schedule it on that.
I think we usually try to start our project workshops a little bit earlier than our council meetings, right? We've done like six o'clock, but that, I mean, what time of the evening, I'm not sure what your work's scheduled at.
Yeah, you can like, come down at six or whatever. You give me a date and a time, I can usually make a, schedule it on that.
So, are you thinking, date in a couple of weeks, like, on the twenty-seventh, that Monday?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, just to get started, if you think, I mean, or we could just spend the twenty-seventh kind of tackling these other issues, the budget.
Yeah, well, perhaps I could, I think, give you a rough draft, with some alcohol and areas, highlights in it about purchase and stuff. And hopefully, you won't write them off our list here tonight yet, that's on our agenda. But yeah, perhaps if you guys wanna do it in reverse, you wanna tackle the other items first, and I can give you a copy of the budget. Like, even, of course, you, as well before that, we'll have it here, that's fine, anyway. And we can just do some general things, we wanna tackle the other items in the front, first hour, and then move to the budget. That way, that way, the other items are longer and lingering. Get the do it guard at the front end.
Yeah, because I think that.
Because the budget's not gonna complete at that point anyway, so, at that point, maybe we do the other end in the first hour.
Yeah.
And last hour, whatever's left, and we can put the budget.
Kind of like explosion.
Great, you know, go over it lightly and bring it on, you know, gives my idea to push it back for you guys.
So, how's Monday, the twenty-seventh look for everyone?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Yeah, I'm like, time, I could do six, if we're on, we could do six, make it a lot.
Six words?
Yeah.
We're talking about rentals, I know we talked about very cheap majestic.
You remember weeks notice, I had. You remember weeks notice, I think that might work, but I don't know this guy.
I would note it, I, of course, I don't-
One time.
Do you, do you happen to know if the, the department has any meetings that day? Not that I expect you to know his calendar.
They will likely not have any meetings at six.
Not that I will hold you to it.
Don't you have, I don't know if you have a training one night a week somewhere?
No, about a day.
Okay.
Football.
So we want to plan for the first one, the 27th then?
Sure.
So March 27th, six.
Topics.
So the topics for that, I guess if Chief Majestic can attend, we can talk about the rental inspection. Do you want him there for that? I know you do, but like, do you want to talk about it?
I would like-
If he's not there, would you still want to talk about it?
Now that we have another member of council.
I think we leave it up, let's talk about it whether he's there or not.
Okay.
Sounds good, so we'll put that on there. And social media, which shouldn't take too long.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what exactly the social media discussion will be.
Yeah.
I think that's coming, so-
Or maybe just communications in general, you know, maybe outreach.
Then I get, then I get.
Okay. Then would you want to, I don't have any more time on that meeting, and then the budget, second half? If you have any.
I'm sure I have something to leave this there, and at least a, maybe a budget introduction.
Yeah. Okay, and then we want to pick a second meeting, so that's- That was March 27th, and then we meet again for council on the, is it April 11th?
11th, right. So that's the fourth Monday this month, you want to do the fourth Monday, April 2. Now we have to adopt the main meeting.
Budget.
Yes, budget. And now it says that's the second meeting, so for, for some reason, you know, we need to schedule a second meeting in, to do it. Because we have to put it in paper, the public key and stuff too.
By what time, by what meeting?
It says by charter, by the second meeting in May.
So by your main meeting?
Yeah, so for some reason it's kind of early in the ninth that month, and you have to put it in the paper.
You're going to do a second meeting for that.
So that means, I think we had in the past, so you'd have to have it in the paper like on the 26th of April, so it's kind of-
It's too rushed, so.
Right.
I'd like to avoid any additional meetings, if we can schedule something like- That's just my personal program, I'm thinking that out here, but-
So if we had the council meeting at the 11th, so we meet, if we meet, well, on March 27th, the council meeting is two weeks and a day. I mean, I can have more, I mean-
Well, on Monday, the 17th.
Do you mean, is it here?
24th.
That's why I suggested maybe the fourth would be the 24th, fourth Monday would be the 24th. That is only-
Well, that would give you enough time to post.
Right, that, that makes it almost impossible to adopt by midnight, because we'd have to meet it and have it done that night and post it in the paper. I mean, if we-
So basically, you could either squeeze a meeting in earlier in April, or we'd have to have a special council meeting in May to be able, just to approve the budget. So, if we squeeze one in in April, it's one less meeting, but the special meeting wouldn't be long. The budget was the only thing on our agenda, it would just be coming in, grouping it, so, something to think about.
If we did the second meeting on April 3rd, which is a week after our first meeting.
So the 27th would be the first workshop, and then another workshop on the 3rd?
Yeah. That gives you plenty of time, if there's anything else you want to go over, or-
And that's a week before the next council meeting?
Right.
That works for me, how about?
Wednesday's.
Sunday. It's on a Sunday this year.
We're going, sorry, we're back.
I've done this, keep watching.
We clearly hit our walls.
Again at six o'clock?
Yep. Is that where everyone?
Do you want these in the community room?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that. So 4:30 at six.
Some sandwiches okay for the first one, little subway sandwiches.
4:03 at six, did you say 4:30?
Sorry, 4:03 at six, yeah.
I'm like, 4:30, so they leave?
I'll bring, I'll contribute to any food.
Left our roast dog cookies maybe?
Yeah. So put that on the big budget, and then do we want to talk about the fire hall parking lot, is that down there again?
That's part of the budget, yeah. That, and then the parking lot engineering type, that's all budget stuff.
Okay.
I think I shared the latest, greatest, kind of effective estimate from Rollup here, would you do a go with everybody?
Yeah.
It creeped up because they hadn't included some removal of the cement long here, and the drainage issues here, and the drainage issues of the parking lot initially. And Don and I got, you know, that, that's a big part of this project, is the drainage stuff, so. It tended to go up. Okay. And then if on the April meeting, you know, we have a need to schedule another one, I guess we can look at that.
We'd have time, yeah. How are we, I'm through the dictation deadlines.
We're okay right now, but I don't have figures, final figures from the county to do the, to figure out the base tax rate and then do the multiplication. I think we're okay as far as the rollback goes and not, not being required to have a truth of taxation, we'll just have the budget hearing. Last time it was because we, we had to have one because we were not within the formula. It was an actual, the rollback was less than what, I think we had reestablished the maximum, I would say 12.173 or something like that. So, but that should be, that, it's usually the end of March, beginning of April, we get those numbers.
Right.
From the L40, 4029s, L4028s, so.
Okay, I think we're outside on that then. We'll move on to the board of commissions, maybe the appointments. And Ms. Hauser, who's been here patiently the entire time, I appreciate you. Applied and have her application and the packet, who already served, I believe on this one, he worked with appeals for us, is that right?
Yeah, an alternate.
Alternate?
Yeah.
And so I think that our, it's our charter that has some restrictions about multiple commissions, correct? As far as the planning commission would go, so.
Yeah, yeah, and the, the domain name and that, I think that's something to do.
Okay. Got it, so, did you want to speak this evening, or?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
What's Janie applying for?
Uh, the beautification commission, or the, or the planning commission.
Where are you, yeah? Yeah, because I'm just an alternate for his EVA, and I'm actually on the, you know, the board, so, just when somebody isn't there, but-
Right.
Which we do have a vacancy, so you're actually seated right now.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Congratulations. We met like, like, twice last year, I think?
If that, yeah, once for sure.
One, we had a sign at the beginning of the year, I think, and then we just had the car wash.
Oh, yes, twice we did.
Yeah, we did ours last year.
I wanted to recommend Tanya Hauser for appointment to the beautification commission. Thank you for all your service to the Village of Oxford, we really appreciate you. Is there a second?
Support.
Motion by Cook, supported by Hallamuth, any discussion? I carry none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries, thank you so much. We do, do still have a vacancy on the planning commission to fill. I think that we, we didn't receive any other particular applications, but we did ask some of the council vacancy applicants if they were interested, so I was going to follow back up with them. Yeah.
I don't think they answered it.
Oh, there was a couple of misses, Jacob said he wouldn't, I think it was somebody else. Oh, the gentleman in the back with the permit.
I think at least all of them said they would at least consider it.
Yeah. Miss Meyer, I don't think he said, I think he, no, I don't think so, I think he was one who said, wasn't, there isn't any other thing, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I remember too, but I could reach out to them just to see if they're still interested. That will remain vacant for now. There is alternate vacancies at a lot of the council seats, do you want appointments for those? Did you want the alternates selected for the?
Not really, again, the biggest reason I wanted to break it back up, like the Semcog and MML. You guys, it's annual appointment, and Allison's already MML, Kelsey, I think you are the delegate for Semcog in the Semcog, I think. Meeting has been since this month.
Yeah. I think I've been signing at it, so.
Good, so in case you're going to be there in the official capacity, it'd be best if you were appointed officially to be there in official capacity, I thought.
Yeah.
A lot of the alternates like John Noda and Cable Cushion, council members already have them covered. I don't think there's much we need for an alternate, I don't know per se.
Right.
We could, but most of the time, if they have Cable Cushion, they'll make it. I've already dealt with Republican Trail, so I, I go with, and Allison cannot. Those aren't as important, I just wanted to get those for the MML and Semcog, because of the upcoming meeting, that it would be best if you went and had been reaffirmed.
Yeah, I believe I'm attending the Semcog General Assembly meeting, so I wouldn't mind staying on as the delegate. But if anybody else was interested in attending, I'd be happy to not be as well, so. So I'll move to appoint myself, Kelsey Cook, as the delegate for the year, for, for this year, 2023, for Semcog.
Support.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Hallamuth, any discussion? Carry none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries. So how about MML, Allison, is there something you're interested in serving on, so?
I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make the conference. I think we have left that up to if someone was going to go, we will put them in that slot.
Yeah, I think that's what you're talking about.
And you have an alternate spot, you didn't, I think you actually was on?
The Michigan Municipal League.
Good, it's a good, they do good training for new people.
It is a very good conference than before.
Yeah, they do, yeah, Michigan Municipal League, we're a member of, as the Village of Oxford, and all the local communities across the state are as well. They have a ton of resources, conferences, seminars, local government training, I'll just mention.
If you go online under the, you, under the MML, kind of, check, check. If you go on and log in and you can look at their research materials, there's some, you'll, you'll trigger on to some good reading for new members of a, of a council or a board. Easy reads, and they tend to be succinct and easy readings.
So there is already this orientation peg that I provided to them, with where, where site, locations.
Or if you're, if you're running on top of, you could look at different topics, and you can get a nice one or two page summary of that, that particular type of topic.
Allison, do you want to continue in that role, or do you want to?
I can leave, I can stay in that role if, I just don't want to look that away from somebody else if they were-
Yeah, is anyone interested in attending the annual conference, you know, the news?
I don't feel like it's in August.
August is just a temporary one, the other it seems like.
The Capitol Conference is April 18th to 19th.
But they're coming, so, and, and as a member, you can attend the conference, go to classes, you just, only one member is allowed to be representative for voting reasons.
Okay, can alternate vote if the members aren't there?
Yes.
Okay.
But they just want to know who, that's why they want to know who it is. They're becoming three council members showing up, they're all trying to vote, you know, they want to know, who's your voting number?
Kate Logan and I went to a conference, I was, like, at the end of the day, we went in, I think it was like last Monday, how were you?
Were you, they just both threw a vote?
Yeah.
They just want to know who the delegate and alternate are for voting purposes, other than that, anyone who go to a meeting or, or seminar or the conference and attended.
Right. Would you be interested in being an alternate, in case you-
Yeah, I think so, I just got to check dates.
Okay, no, wait, if you happen to attend, you're able to vote for us, if not, then that's okay too, so, do you want to do that, say?
Yeah.
Yeah, it works.
Okay, so I'll move to appoint Allison Kemp as the delegate, and Jacob Negocia as the alternate with the term 2023.
I'll support that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Fantastic. We have some other rules as well, and I think I'll let you get some of them. And we can always, next time these come up, if there's something you're interested in, or if anybody wants to kind of swap anything around. I know Lori's absent tonight too, so I'd like to know, you know, her term, I guess, for Noda goes to end up, she's got some time actually, 2024. But there's an alternate space, so if anybody's interested in anything, just let me know. I think for tonight's meeting purposes, at least we have both current ones covered, so. Any other discussion on, again, some council? Okay, we now move on to the next agenda item, I don't have any business, and we'll ask the vector sewer jetting truck proposed purchase. This looks like a good one, too.
That must, that's lucky. You never see a guy with a smile on his face wanting to come up here and talk about sewer, but-
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So council, last few budget workshops of the last period, we've been discussing replacing our 1987 sewer truck. We've been looking, we've been looking, we've been, like, this particular sewer truck has come through Bell Equipment, who we do business with very now with our street sweeper. We have for, for many years, they're out of Auger Hills. He contacted me with this picture, I have not seen the truck. What you see is what I, what I see. It's in Wisconsin, it's coming this way, they're going to do all the service on it, and they have, do have maintenance records. So, we're just looking to get pre-approved for this dollar amount, so when the truck does come here and we do look at it, we already approved to move forward. We have looked at, this is a single axle unit, like, I know the county or bigger cities use a tandem axle unit. Just the size of our community and trying to get around these streets, these single axles are a lot easier to maneuver, but they're very hard to come by. So when this came across my computer, I took it right to manager Midor and said, all right, let's get this on the council. I've already made contact with the sales rep from Bell and said, hold it, hold it for us, and we're taking it to council for free approval.
Are we going to be able to get rid of our old one?
We will, it does have some value, it's 1987.
Somebody's got one.
But it does have some value. We just, I, there hasn't been no negotiation on that. Same with like a warranty, we've not negotiated any type of warranty on this new vehicle. Like I said, what, what you see is what I know, until, the, the vehicle's still in Wisconsin.
I'll make a post to allow the village manager to purchase a 2011 sewer jetting truck from Bell Equipment. After verification that the unit meets TPW's provision, Don breaks his approval, and standard for a price back to the seat $200,000.
Second, motion made by Hallamuth, seconded by Cook. Any further discussion or questions from council? Personally, I know the importance of having a vector truck in a community, because we don't want backed up basements, we don't want flooding, and so, yeah, it's a good asset to have.
And we've been casting that, Don has cast that, we've only had like one or two in the last couple years that have come on the radar.
Yeah, yeah, I know you've been looking for it quite a while, so. Okay, any discussion questions?
So I guess, when you do check it out, what's, what, what is that process going to look like?
Just go through the maintenance records, go through the vehicle, make sure like the interior of the hoppers are good, or all the connect, everything, the pump. Just make sure everything's been maintained and is in good working condition. It's municipal, so municipalities are pretty good about maintaining their equipment. I mean, ours is the 1987, I mean, we, oil changes every year. mean, ours is a 1987, I mean, we oil changes every, you know, twice a year, go through it, and usually they're not beat up too bad, it's usually when they're contracted around, they get a little bit beat up, so, I mean, we'll have Bell Equipment, once this truck comes from Wisconsin, Bell Equipment will go through the entire truck and make sure it's all in good working order.
And you'll see, I had some fluff in the number, because the price that they gave us was 175, but we may want to have, have them in there for potential bumper-to-bumper type warranty or something like that, and that's probably one we might need, the way I don't know, but I want to make sure that, you know.
Do you think there could be a bidding war for it?
We are doing what's interesting. I don't think, the price that he gave us, I think would be the price.
The single axle, I don't take price, that takes a lot of people out of the game.
Okay.
Yeah, but. He's got about 10 people right now that would be interested, it won't, it won't, it won't last long.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Helmut?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Negocia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Or Joe Sampson?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, I am ten, group, any religious consent agenda, there are none, so we'll do our second opportunity for public comment, whether any public would like to, or anyone would like to request counsel?
Hello, Jenny, 14 Pontiac Street, and actually, this is only half a comment and half a question. I started thinking about this this morning and then thought I would bring it to council's attention, just so you can tell me that you're already aware of it, every day when I drive my son to school on Powell Street, there's a fairly significant size tree that's rusting on either a utility pole, or a telephone wire, or something, it's very significant, and it just makes me nervous to drive by it every day, so I didn't know if you guys were already aware of it, if somebody is looking into it, I would, I'm surprised that maybe the neighborhood, the neighbors or people that live there didn't bring it to your attention, but it seems like a significant health issue to the people that live around there, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention, if you didn't know about it.
Do not, no, thank you, well, we, we judge the utility companies typically, you know, if it's a binary, it's going to be the cable company and phone companies, so.
Okay, yeah, it's, you can't miss it, so anyway, thank you so much.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else read another comment?
Well, you came to the meeting, you wanted to say something. My name is Tanya Heiser, 1134 Lafayette, I just have a couple questions, on January 27th, at about 7:30 in the morning, we had that big ice that was unexpected, and there were people sliding up and down Cemetery Hill, on Verdic, on Pontiac Street, so I looked for an emergency number for DPW, but there is not one on the website, I did pass the truck, because they were out there within probably 20 minutes, so I did find an email, I emailed somebody, I'm like, I'm not sure if you're the right person, but if you could let somebody know, and they were there, they were out there, because I left about 20 minutes after I emailed that, but when I passed the truck, I was like, well, is there a phone number on the truck? But there's not, so I didn't know if there was a specific emergency number to call for those kinds of things, or like, if there's a water main break on a weekend, or, you know, something like that, so, so that's my, but they, the response, I didn't get a response back from the person that I emailed, but the message did get received by somebody because they, they were out there taking care of everybody. And my only, and this is not really a complaint, it's just, you know, we need, the citizens and residents need to know who they need to call, you know, if there were water main breaks or something like that, like on a Saturday. The garbage men, they're becoming super early, which I love, however, they're blocking Pleasant Street because they are in the middle of the road, so nobody can go around them on either side.
They're blocking, and not yet?
No, 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 they're blocking Pleasant Street, like, before you get to Verdic, they're blocking all of Pleasant Street, so nobody can go around.
Gotcha.
So they need to pick a side, so people can pass, because it's, they usually come down my street about seven, and they're on Pleasant Street about 10 after eight is usually when I leave, and then people can't pass or go around them, because they're parked in the middle to try to get both sides of the garbage, but.
Don't a lot of the residents park in the street there, too?
Uh, two cars park in the street there.
On the east side?
Yeah, I can't remember his name, the White House, and then the other White House, there's like a beige minivan and then comes the white car, but he doesn't park in the street, he parks on the easement, the minivan parks in the street, so there's only really one car to go around, but, but when people are trying to go to work, they can't get around the big garbage truck, but, closer than that.
Thank you for your comments. Next call for public comment, next thing on, we'll move on to committee report, so , I'm personally, Jo covers Noda, she's absent, I'm not sure if anyone else has anything going on, anyone else?
Yeah, I worked out an agreement for Noda. Just, we're, we're bringing together an operation and making a storage agreement for the trolley, Noda will be housing the trolley, the DDA owns the trolley, so we're agreeing, we'll work out a term for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. And then, planning commission?
I don't think we've had some sort of this meeting there.
Okay, that's to be by, by those.
Yeah.
The one at Verdic, and not, or Verdic.
We were supposed to have all of the, we didn't have all of our paperwork together, so we should meet next week.
Okay, and cable commission?
Um, the cable commission did meet, the personnel committee, which I'm on, the performance valuation for the station manager, she did receive a raise, and there's a lot of exciting stuff going on with the cable, I'm very excited. They're doing this live streaming, they're getting, it's on YouTube, it's really kind of spiraling, Terry's doing a great job, the staff's doing a great job, just to warn them, I'm going to hit you guys up for 100% of the cable fees, which I think is.
All certain of the fees?
Yeah. I think even money, they just bought a lot of new equipment, so they're going to be having additional cameras, sporting events, it's going to be great, they're doing a good job.
Great. The DDA met, but I was not able to attend, anybody have updates on that?
Nothing, I think, but it was their pay group, I don't know, why those planners and that sign, I don't know, it's been a while, not a lot in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Obviously, they do a lot of good things, Latin on their plate with the grants and stuff that's working on them, and they were, went off today, but Birmingham Circle gets pregnant in the northeast, southeast side of the Smith, on the rear side and stuff, so.
Great, I know Kelly's out of the state of the county this evening, otherwise she would be here.
Yeah.
So. Okay, any interest?
Again, and last month, it was out of Edison, and we went, Matt Feiger, it was now on the board at Lake Orion, or, I'm sorry, Orion Township, and he's now the LA rep there, went down, he still left with Lansing, they, like I said, they approved prior last month, the run, the truck run, so, so, and then the meeting is the next round, we're in Orion Township.
Okay, thank you. And then DDA, there's no meeting, okay, manager clerk, staff attorney report, Mr. Ward?
I don't have much, other than, it's been for sale for a long time, 22 North, Weydart Glass, sold as a new owner.
Yeah, that's exciting.
It's exciting, but it's also going to be a little interesting to see that they're looking to do a bank facility there for weddings and stuff, and parking will be an issue.
I thought.
But, the gentleman's a local guy, I think, went to school with Kelly, graduated the same year, Kyle, so, interesting.
Did they also buy the back parking lot?
No.
The T-Dot, or the?
We have that agreement for another 60 years or something like that, that's not, it's public parking, that did not change.
But who owns it now, the new people?
Well, I, yeah, I haven't seen it yet, but yeah, I believe that was transferred as well, because I believe it's one parcel, and no parcel split came to us for a split, so it's, it's still one parcel.
Okay.
So that should transfer as well.
Great, thank you. Ms. Amika?
I'm here, thank you.
Chief Sol?
No, all good, thank you.
Okay. Council comments, Mo, you want to start?
Have we been keeping a handscript record?
I spoke to one of the ladies that's here tonight, one of the girls called Miles, and it sounds a little tenuous over there, but again, I think they're each a ways from that anyway, I, you know, I think, they're really, for us to watch, I mean, I think the police see it, of course, there's no parking on one side, and nothing's changed for them, so their observations and control that would be the same.
Because we keep out, make it shabby, the trash make up, and if the other neighbors are blocking their trash, that's a problem, if they're blocking their driveway, that's a problem, the chief isn't actually listening to me right now, so I'm just going to wait for some.
Yeah.
And again, 100% of the cable fees, keep in the back of your minds.
You're going to be asking that of all the communities?
Well, the town, the township already does, well, that obviously does not.
We're working on it.
Anderson, downtown, Terry, it's about every year, I'd like to get 100% of their fees.
Are they 50, 50, also currently?
I think so.
Okay, they are.
I thought so.
So you want to get all of them?
I'd love to get all of them, and I know the cable, because, you know, their budget is not that huge, their budget is really never expanding, so those fees are very important.
I guess, okay.
AT&T and Charter.
I guess. I'll provide that, what those numbers are, it shows up a little differently now in budget, with plant managers moving around, I can provide what those are for funding.
I just want to say, my husband's surgery, his first surgery went very well, his second surgery's in two days, that I'm home free.
Great.
Then we can meet every day.
I'm glad.
You're welcome, Jacob, you ready to run away yet?
Thank you.
Run away, run away.
Would I make a statement, anything?
Uh, no comments.
Thank you, welcome, Jacob.
In terms of our charter, I know we paid for them to go through that.
The first suite.
Okay, is there's, one's the second suite?
I'm doing one.
Okay.
Well, I did the second suite, you did the third suite.
Hopefully, we catch you all, you know, and then we'll see where we are, should be glad we give you a real solid update on that at the next meeting.
There's a lot. I know, and I'm not saying there's a lot, I'm, this is just an example of it, I mean, attorneys went through and they identified some obsolete, or the attorney, obsolete things as far as the law's concerned and the conflicts with the law, but we still have to go through and do the actual, you know, work to decide if that's, if that's what we want to be represented, you know, in our ordinance and or our charter, so it's just going to be a lot of work, and we're working. I had no idea. My comment was less about your, no, I just.
I think at some point, well, we shouldn't talk about it too much, it's, it's not in the agenda, but at some point you have to pick the larger issues, so what, what, as a, as a council, a lot of people like to look at their purchasing portion of their charter, you know, what is your purchasing, what does it say about purchasing in your charter, what does it say about, about council vacancies and replacement processes, what does it say about council discipline, you know, things like ethics, take the big ones and see how they read, and then start working through them. You did this before when you changed six of the provisions, when we did our last charter amendment process through the governor's office, and you picked some, some ones that really needed, they were just like staring at you, it needed to be fixed, so we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah, I just want to say, I almost regret opening the can of worms, but it really needed to be opened, it really needs to be done, so, you know.
If you, if you go around, and I'm not to beat on this topic, but if you go around and we look at the cities, who, which is south of you, down for the southeastern, the charters are ancient, I think Birmingham is the one who recently tackled their charter, but a lot of them, they go through this process, and they look at it and say, ah, and then the next year they look at it and say, ah, and nothing ever gets done, it's a, it is a bold and a commendant project if you're, if you're going to do it, it's, you know, kudos to you if we look at it and we can get it done.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that we're posting Nearly Ever Stay on our Facebook, Village Facebook page, we've gotten a bunch of new followers, a bunch of new likes, getting information out, our community forums, and so generally, it's been just, you know, public awareness of things, and should be that way, just for, you know, public outreach is part of that effort, so that's going well, we can talk about it more at one of our, one of our workshops, but, so.
Thank you for taking that out, I meant to thank you.
Oh, yeah, great, yeah, there's no, I'm behind the curtain on this one, so, but, yeah, Jo and I are working together on that, so it's going well, so maybe council members want to see it or see it differently, just keep that in mind, we can talk about it at a budget workshop coming up, or, I call them budget workshops, but for other topics too, so, and that's it, so, any further comments from council?
Make a move into attorney, DDA, right, of course.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Very good.